Okay.
The helicopter. Taking six miles to go over the house to get there.
New area. Three forty nine.
He must have missed it. He must have missed that one. Certainly he's run around, I thought the second time we ran.
I just couldn't see, sir.
He's coming back around. He's uh he's in his house. About three hundred.
I'm well.
We're doing that report that we're gonna try to get a couple of others and one helicopter.
I uh didn't have my ringer on when you called.
Ringer, yeah.
I'm sure if I was calling you or you were calling me, but anyway.
And then we have to.
I talked.
Good afternoon.
That was bad, Todd. No, Mr. Just open.
He's the only one who let me by now.
I got one here.
I see a pan out there by the park. I will get it for him, I know exactly where I've seen him, I got. Have seen, I'll be.
He's a lot of mystery.
You got one minute?
I was sitting out there.
There you go.
Thank you.
So Todd, where are you vacationing?
I'm good, Steve, right?
Oregon. Yeah, I would not guess there.
Well, I normally go hiking in Colorado.
Yeah, I can never say that.
So uh just just doing a little short hikes this year, so but it's beautiful, I've never been here before.
Uh here it is.
Thank you, Eagle Eye.
All right, that's why everybody here. Except for the ma- mayor's not here, Todd, so. All right, Todd, I guess let's just start off with depot street updates, uh we got the. Well, let's start off, let's go down to number three, uh CSX underpass, underpasses, all you know. We had an accident there on Friday. As far as I know, there were no fatalities, uh we haven't heard any different since then, uh truck tried, was coming into town. Got up on the tracks evidently tried to gun it and beat the train, didn't quite make it, so. Was hit in the tail end of its flatbed, knocked him off the tracks over on the south side, southeast side. And uh he was life flighted, the driver was life flighted to Vanderbilt and the passenger was taken in ambulance, so. That's all I know about that and um really all I can tell you at this point, THP could go for the investigation and nothing else.
I say we shut that overpass off.
That has been brought up.
I think that's the only way we're preparing anything, any other serious injuries.
Did we talk to CSX, CSX, they said I put on that there?
Not at the time, since the last one. Not since the last one, they said they were gonna do five other projects with the amount of money that they were gonna spend on one project.
Was out there, day four yesterday, I went through. There was two cars behind me, I went under the underpass, it's coming out, two shot over the top of them, I think they checked up at the stop signs. They come off the uh east side of the track, never stopped at the stop sign right there. And luckily I was as cautious driver as I am, if it's somebody else, it'd have been an accident there. I don't know what y'all think about it, I think it's just uh obviously we ain't gonna give them the help from CSX, TIC. And I think it'd probably be in the best interest of citizens, Chappewea, just shut that overpass off and just use your underpass. Now, I know there's gonna be people that's gonna say, well, we got emergency services vehicles gotta get around, we got commercial vehicles gotta get around. Need I remind folks, we work for the city of Chappewea. And I hate to say it, I hate to say it, Lord, I hate to say it, that on the other side of the tracks is Morse County. But now, we ain't got the money to fix it, let's face it, we ain't got the money to fix it.
We don't have permission to fix it.
But if we had both, we we already fixed it. See, I think part of the best thing is we shut that thing off, um I hate it for folks to live out there, uh maybe Morse County put a fire service out there.
Good luck.
Well.
You should go.
Go on.
What's the, what's the clearance? No, they don't.
Fire drums can't get in.
Four twenty six.
Eight eighteen wavers probably shouldn't be going on the top of it either, can they even get over the top?
It's hard to do even with the ladder.
Without bottoming out? So did you don't take your ladder truck across that track track?
Our ladder's eleven four, it won't go underneath it.
Yeah. It wouldn't go over, what you saying?
It'd go over, yeah.
Without bottoming out?
It's it's fun, cause you're like this in the air, you're gonna try to sit up in the cap and see you're raising left, where you're going. Hopefully that's why you got somebody riding chican instead of going.
One dangerous thing about that track too is what happened the other day, there was another train sitting on it.
Yeah, and that's what happened.
When when there's not a train there, you can pull up and it's pretty clear, each way. When there's another train there, it's a dangerous situation.
Yeah, mine was on the last incident too, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yep.
And there's no warning to like slow drivers, cause there's no caution lights, nothing there, so.
Just the stuff, just the bug.
Just the stuff.
About four months ago, I agreed with you on shutting that train track down, so I mean, we go down Kenny Springs Road, go down approach the road, I don't see why we have to have.
If you go down Kenny Springs, you still can't get under the tracks.
And go down any night.
Well, if you're talking about the height, it's the same thing, same thing with railroad streets, you gotta go around if you got anything.
So that happens in Lynch County, we've got a, we've got a train track that runs off Clovercroft, I'm sure y'all familiar with it. Uh in Wilson Pike, they have that shut down, they have detour signs all over the place, like hey, you gotta go around, I know Mary County's got one, um they call it the can opener. Cause people hit that bridge all the time.
What what's the legality of shutting that down?
Now, just to be clear, we're talking about just the overpass?
Just overpass, just overpass. Just overpass.
Todd?
Yeah, so I mean, the board has the authority to close roads and so I think, you know, the first step would just be figuring out what what we need to do. Physically on the ground to block it off both ways, but uh but the board can vote, you know, to close down the overpass and then. Uh I don't know if there there's a way to keep it open for emergency vehicles, but that's something we can look at.
Yeah, I'm wondering if there's a way for us to.
Mary put it down.
A gate possibly, the emergency services have a key, I mean, I know they gotta stop it unlike the gate, but it still might be better in certain situations if they.
Simply implement.
I don't know, I'm just throwing the idea.
Yeah, say pop it through, implement a gate for first responders, you know, you know, once you got access to it.
Possibly, if that makes, it's what we're talking about.
Second, if there's a, there's a structure fire out across the road, obviously you're wanting first responders to get there, but I get it.
I mean, that may not make sense, but it's even worse, it's worth talking about.
I don't, I don't think a gate would work, to be honest with you.
It may not, I I have to put a lot of thought into it.
Maybe some folks just run right through it, and I know, I I've I've got probably ten of them come to my house, will be the ones that will go right through the doggone thing.
Hey Todd, we mentioned about like six months ago to years, Mike Fockenberry, Mayor, I just showed up, sorry I'm late. Mentioned numerous times to the board in you about putting up a sign that says emergency use only. It may be a flashing little caution light, but at least a sign that says emergency use only, do not enter, does that relieve us any or help some?
Yeah, I mean, I think anything could help some and and again legally, the board can vote to do it and maybe what.
They're shaking their head, no, but we gotta do something.
Yeah, one one idea I guess could be that you could go ahead and and vote to close it down while we investigate options for emergency service.
I'm good with that.
And I surely somebody can come up with a way to to block it off good, but still allow for emergency vehicles to use it if needed.
When would the emergency vehicle have to use it if it's flooded?
Fire truck. Anytime there's a fire on the side.
It's a fire truck, they can't go under.
Gotcha.
Fire, fire truck, you know, have to.
Does any of your vehicles other than obviously the rescue squad, the the little Tahoe, what all gets to that, now the brush truck does?
All of it except the ladder, which is ninety percent of the time the first one up.
But the ladder we're only supposed to go out, one time we just elected for the ladder only go out if it was a huge fires?
No, it goes up whenever it's responding to auto exclamation.
But we supposed to respond to ladder to emergency to a red灯?
They carry their extrication, their extrication tools and all that.
They like that for you.
We talked about one time not doing the ladder truck for for red vehicles.
So have you tried to talk to anybody with CSX?
Uh not since this weekend, no. But uh I can reach out, see what we can do.
I don't wanna wait on them, I think y'all should do something, I think.
Well, we have to have their permission to do anything, that's the.
On our end, would we?
Or at least see how far off we need to be.
Yeah, I mean, we can shut roads down on our end.
Yeah, on our side.
But we would have to be well back, and if we do it well back, it's gonna shut off the underpass too.
Right, so depending where you shut it off.
We can't just go up and shut off on where it goes up the hill, cause that's their property.
Citizens without their permission.
We gotta have fifty, they have fifty feet on each side of the track.
Do you remember what Danny talked to him last time?
That's from the center of the track? Like I, I think that's from the edge of the track, each side of it.
Each side so far, so many feet.
So we gotta find that thing.
I can find that out, I'm not.
I just need to find it easy before we even decide then to determine, if it's gonna be fifty foot and you're blocking both underpass and overpass, then that's obviously not feasible.
Todd, do you remember, cause this ain't the first time we've had this discussion with the railroad.
So I don't know that the railroad has ever, I'm not, I don't know if Danny or anybody else has ever proposed the town closing the overpass off. I know we we had talked about trying to get cooperation with CSS for CSX or a fix or maybe additional signage, but. And and I'm trying, I don't really visualize it that well, but it I think it seems like if we could barricade the road off at the town's right away. Um probably, uh no, but Phil, I don't know, you are more familiar with it than I, you think that's gonna be within there, the CSX right away?
It's gonna be very close. I'm not sure how big, how long that ramp is that goes up to the track, it might be more than fifty.
Well, I tell you what, the next time, next time someone gets hit on the railroad track, railroad tracks, and they're the ones that's struggling us to open it back up, they're the ones.
They're responsible. I agree.
I mean, if we're, we're trying to shut it down, they're trying to keep it open, someone's getting hit, that's.
I agree.
I would also ask where the easement measurement is from, cause I think pretty standard, or pretty standard out, I would just verify that and just make sure. If that fits.
I do, from a liability standpoint, I think anything the town does, basically whether it's just posting a sign saying, you know, road closed, but. You know, whether it's barricades or whatever, reduces the liability, we can only do what we can do, but. Uh anything the town does to discourage somebody from using it as a town street is gonna reduce the liability.
I agree.
Is this something that the board will have to vote on, Todd, to shut this road down?
Yeah, yeah, we would need to vote on that.
Can that be done by resolution and can that be done next week?
Yeah, I think we could even do it, you know, we could draft a resolution and and maybe again, what I would suggest is. Vote to close it down temporarily while we investigate, you know, options for it, um and that could be a motion even, but probably we got time to prepare a resolution to do it.
Does that please the board to do a resolution to?
Yep. Please me?
Todd, if you don't mind, just draw us up a something to the effect of saying that we're going to temporarily shut the overpass down. To everything to emergency vehicles and then we will put signs up.
Perfect.
Yep, we'll do it.
Okay, anybody else say anything else on that? Okay, uh for those who don't know, I know Ben and Joe were at the planning commission meeting the other night, uh. There was a, it was brought up to vote to annex the roadway only on the other side of depot street to go around to bring another. Exit entrance or egress, whatever we'd like to call it. Off of the grove subdivision out further by a half mile on, I guess it'd be on Old Highway ninety nine at that point. Uh it was tabled due to the fact that there's a sinkhole out here and there was things that needed to be checked on. We did get a report back from Steve Foster from Heathcotten Davis, who's our engineer, saying that uh they went out and inspected the area. And it was determined that there was no problems, it appeared to be stable and safe. Till while we were there, two loaded dump trucks went over and no deflections in the paper noted, blah blah. So this was uh our engineer doing this, so this will go back to the planning commission. Uh to be sent to the BOMA, Todd, tell me how we need to do this if you do not mind.
So the plan, we, well, first of all, we need to prepare a plan of services that uh even though we are just going to annex county right away, we still have to. Prepare the plan of services and add those details spelled out in there. And then because it it hasn't been approved uh by the planning commission yet, they would need to. Either recommend or not the annexation and uh consider the plan of services as well for the board to look at. And then in addition to that, uh the BOMA has to have a public hearing uh before it votes on the annexation itself. And we have to give twenty one days uh published notice in advance of that uh public hearing, so. Um what I suggested, if we want to put a vote on the agenda for Monday. To refer it back to the planning commission to prepare uh and recommend the plan of services and annexation. Or or not, you know, they can, they may vote not to recommend it, um but then we can still go ahead and advertise a public hearing for. Uh the October meeting and and then we come back before BOMA uh to vote on it, what up or down at that point.
Okay.
So at the meeting on Monday, y'all have a resolution to either recommend it to the, or say, hey, we'd like to look into this, or y'all in favor of it?
And then they would have to turn around and say, yes, we are, or or not in favor of it, if they are, they send it back to you.
But either way, it allows me to go ahead and post the notice to get that public hearing rolling.
So it's a public news.
Public hearings didn't used to be as hard, but now they've gone twenty one days out, so. If you wanted to get anything done by two months from now, you've got to kind of start planning for that, it's what we're doing.
It it's just hard when you only have a paper the front part of the week.
Yeah, if we have a daily paper, which I don't understand why they still do the paper anyway. It should just be on, but that's the way it is.
The members here that are on the planning commission, who are familiar with this and have heard about it, I mean, this is new to us. Y'all see any reason why this isn't a good idea?
Marshall County wants us to do it.
Marshall County.
Marshall County, uh I don't see the benefit of it, it's not.
Down, man, it's worth Paul Rogers' house.
Yeah, I know exactly where it's at.
I just don't see the benefit.
I've got a letter from Marshall County saying that their highway department.
It's Marshall County.
Excuse me, is requesting the city of Chappewea annex the fallen portion of road, Old Highway ninety nine from current Chappewea seat limits. For two thousand four hundred eighty five point seven linear feet, annexing this road includes all names and preparing up a keep. Once annexed, the road portion of the road will be a responsibility of the town of Chappewea.
Is it because, can the entrance not be moved without the annexation? Is it because of the town, Chappewea approved it and it's coming out on county property, is that?
That's what I understand, that the county won't allow the another entrance on there.
I can't, he wants to leave his out.
He doesn't want their folks to spill out right there by the underpass.
And they won't let him listen to annexing for us to take care of it, cause the neighborhood's tearing it up during our schedule.
Yeah, and I haven't heard all the details of this or anything, and I I'd like to hear more about it, but it seems, it it kinda makes sense. To dump them out further away from the tracks, but I just wasn't sure why the town had to annex that in to be able to do that.
Cause they won't let him be go and come out on the road and then the neighborhood is messing up that road, the neighborhood should be responsible for that.
So that's just like.
They won't step up, keep the road.
Yeah, it's just like Stevens Road then, so how does the city not annex that road then, with Spring Creek Farms coming out of that neighborhood?
That was done before.
And that's been a disaster.
That's what I think disaster.
Correct, and that's why I figured out.
That was, that was originally a construction entrance that the developer turned into an entrance, from what I understand. Because the entrance was supposed to come in from the river Porous side.
Right.
And that all happened and then all of a sudden there was an entrance out onto the county road and it was.
Yeah.
It was a circus.
As the location of that. Is it before you get to where you go to Smiley Road or Garder?
We're not to uh.
Part of the west of that.
And go all around Charles. Just Rogers, right around that.
It's right here, Dale.
Charles, Charles.
Dale, here's the railroad track.
Yeah.
You come in, go around this small curve, then go around the big one. And as you go around the other curve, go back right.
So when they first, he developed this, that was the county, he got annexed in Chappewea, that changed the name on the planning commission. And there is easement for the county road, so we gotta get that approved before they can put it in.
Correct, or they'll have one way out, and if they have one way out, they're gonna come back to the board, wanna why we only have one way out, jamming everything up, we didn't allow the other to happen.
I I'll be honest with you guys, I I'm I'm worried about dumping that many cars out on that angry curve right there.
Oh sure. It's gonna come back.
No, no, no traffic.
That's the concern that I think we all have.
No, no traffic.
We're talking about the same stuff. Or is that planning commission?
Well, I mean, would you rather dump out, right at the end of the underpass?
No.
I'm saying like, I don't know, I think we need to, we need to put some thought into this.
Well, the name Bob did.
Well, ultimately it will be for the planning commission to decide to recommend to you.
The planning commission went all through the the county first and then he found out he could annex and put more houses in if you got seawater and sewer in there. So that's changed it, and they follow up.
How far past that curve, as the city of, is it right there on the curve, like right where his entrance is?
It would be.
Probably at the end of that curve.
No, the city doesn't, the city owns a hundred and forty five feet, the city doesn't own that entrance either.
Yeah, correct, right now. If we annex, how far passes, I'm asking, she's, I wanna know how, is it right there at the curve?
I mean, Chris is, you know, you said.
Got you.
Right there, it's still in right here.
Correct.
I mean, we.
Make him pay for it.
Very close to that. It would, it would have to be like at least a hall three way stop and all with it.
And I think that's, well, the city would then on the road, we could put a three way stop.
If the city.
To safely get out of, I mean, you've got that curb and that hill right there.
Yeah.
We ain't got the money to fix what we got now. And that road, I tell you, it's a little bit fixed, I'm just telling you right now, I have it.
So on track, is it being used currently as a construction entrance, is any traffic going off of that county road into the?
As far as I know.
So they're being, it's being utilized.
I don't know where else it would be going in.
Seen a lot of it coming in right here.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that they're going down this road to get here.
Yeah, so he. He has, and he has no property that runs Long Ball Lane or Kenny Springs.
Not yet.
It's either dumping out, running down the pass or right up the curve.
How many, how many feet is that, exactly, are we down from where we start, where we need?
Twenty four hundred and fifty eight.
Fifty eight, more, more, more right?
Yeah.
Right now.
Twenty four hundred and thirty two.
Does it show that there's a curve?
Yeah, go right forward, yeah.
Well, they've got, I mean, I know I keep referring to Williamson, but Clovercroft and all that, they've got a light there as well, uh Tulsa Road. Where it's a red light right before you get to the underpass, and that's the way down here, but it says street light, but.
I kind of imagine it's a four road to be right through that big curve because.
Yeah, it's the same, it's the same.
Um when I lived there, they didn't have anything at all, but I think, I think since they, I think they've got a light up now, but they didn't.
And all those people in the cobras are are in the car, they're still hard to count.
So what's up with you talking today? Current. They're using their instructions.
Hard copy right now. We'll just take the one he's got.
We'll just be for sure.
Just part of them.
That's, that one's for sure happening.
So that one's for sure happening.
The one to add, this one.
So it's not gonna be down?
It's gonna be down by the railroad tracks.
Yeah, there's gonna be ones there as well.
So we're gonna be three entrances then?
Two.
Two. You have to get this approved.
There's one there for you.
I now got one.
It's original, this is Joe's right there and the other one, the only thing about this, at that property line. His property line.
This is the man what they call it, this is part of the.
Yeah. Yeah, I was talking about, they're using their construction entrance now. That's not their original entrance, they're using.
Where, where?
We back here.
If we said no, the county has to fix that road.
They won't let him.
Well, they have to, they have to, the county has to pay that, we ain't got money to fix.
But he can't come out, he can't, they won't let him come out.
Well, we could end it our own way and we could sort of bond it out.
You could.
Annex the road, put a bond on it, so when it's tore up, do we get to fix it?
Have to damage completely.
Yeah, but it won't, it won't go on forever, it'll only go until everybody's done, right? It wants to say what else, tell us, tell where you sign off.
That's right. At least the trucks on the internet. That's right.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you. I've got one for you, Mitch, that.
Is that what they're up to, you want your original? You want your original or is that okay?
No, same thing. Thank you.
We've got ourselves a.
I didn't have a name on it.
If I'm like Ben, if we don't, if we do, we're gonna be, we can't fix the roads we got now, but if we don't do it. And people moving in that neighborhood is gonna be jammed up and blame us for that one too. And they would be right.
Um I would think that most people living in that area is gonna be headed out of town.
The opposite direction, I would think, but I don't know.
We shut down the.
Depends on if they're going to the school or not, got kids, I guess.
Yeah, once, once you shut down the.
The Marshall County, Marshall County Department of Public Utilities mentioned another possible twelve hundred homes. Um and one of the subdivisions that's with over six hundred homes is on that side of the tracks over, um.
It's a dig route.
Dig route.
So you've got, I know y'all are concerned about these homes, right now we're looking at seventy. So.
Maybe one interest is enough for seventy?
It it's not just gonna be this one subdivision, it's gonna be multiple subdivisions.
And we're still gonna fight their fire, so they do something, so we're still gonna have to get somewhere to get around, or they're gonna have to do something, think about it too. They 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 picked it up to what, ten?
Oh, it's further, it's further.
They 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 let theirs go as far as a.
Yeah, I mean, he's already got the road.
Case by case basis, because it's gonna be so far out.
They, they, they put up the, put up the ten.
Before they start, because this, this stuff was approved back years ago.
Yep. And it's slang up the water, which are in two fitting in twenty-seven.
Red light, it was in his old driveway.
Todd, do you have an opinion on this?
Um, I mean, no, not really, as far as whether it's good to annex it or not.
Or, or how we should handle it anyway, I mean.
Well, a couple of things, um, I think I've seen a a, a proposal or an idea from Jim as to how the connection would be made. But, but, but that hasn't, it hasn't been approved yet, so if it's annexed, you know, he'll still have to bring that back to the planning commission to get that um, connection approved, and the planning commission could put stipulations on that for whether it's a you know, stop sign or roundabout or whether he has posted bond for the improvements, you know, all of that. The planning commission would still have some, um, discretion on how that would work. Uh, but ultimately, at the end of the day, again, if the town decides to annex it. Whatever the developer is not gonna pay for, the town will have to pay for it at the same time, so it's, uh, you know, there's pros and cons to it, sure.
I feel like we're kinda fighting multiple things, I, I, I don't know, you know, I've come through this, this Y right here my whole life, and, uh, if you're coming west, coming from the west to the east of railroad tracks down Darty Road, and you come to that stop sign. Looking back to your right, it's always been a downward situation with cars coming down there. Uh, the speed limit, I believe there's like forty-five miles an hour right now, um, I know we've talked about dropping the speed limit on Depot Street to twenty-five. I know that, that kinda got knocked down the last, last meeting or two ago, but I mean, between this Y here, and now we're trying to dump cars off in this ninety degree curve down here, and we still got people doing forty-five miles an hour down there. We're still leaving the underpass open, we got a lot of activity going on right there, in about a half mile stretch, and there's gonna be seven hundred cars. I mean, I know, not right now, there's gonna be seven hundred cars hopping off in this little roadway, and we're just asking for more trouble right here.
Well, if the county does either one of their subdivisions double that.
Oh, right. And so, I'm just wondering if knocking them railroad tracks completely and cutting the whole thing off and being, that would eliminate traffic.
And if Marshall County wants to add all houses and let them come our way, then they need to put some money into it, or play with the game of either opening their tracks or.
We can, they can do that.
Coming from thick roads though, they're not gonna say, there, there's traffic coming there.
In the mornings, if you're not aware that are probably an extra hundred cars or more extra that comes from the Kenny Spring area. They don't go down ninety-nine, because that suggestion, in the park, they come up ninety-nine.
Yep.
So there is extra, because the kids, and they also don't like to go into town, because the red light, they'll go up Lawrence Avenue, come up the other one, and come down Maple Street, or whatever it is.
Well, everybody's trying to beat the traffic.
I know, I mean, but that, they're in there, and the garbage truck come at seven o'clock, and they were backed up to Lawrence's the other morning, going to town.
We've asked the garbage guy to do his time different during school hours. For that reason. But he has not done it, that's another discussion we need to have too. I had the same problem in our neighborhood, blocking the bus, bus trying to come through, and he was blocking the bus. Picking up garbage, so I think his time during school hours may be earlier or a little bit after the buses.
And Jonathan, I think I might have a different drawing. Um, if not, I'll request one and have it ready for tomorrow. Show the word proposed.
Well, one thought, I mean, since it, since we have discussed already, closing the overpass. Um, and then I think Dale brings up a good point, that I, I wasn't aware of the extra traffic there. Um, it, it seems like there's some, there's some information out there that, that we don't really have, that maybe could be helpful in terms of traffic counts and ultimately what the board decides to do with the overpass and that CSX, I mean, that, that could change how you look at where the development should come out, if, if you ended up, um, you know, deciding to close the overpass full time, for example.
We'll get recognition from the school too, because the school bus goes over a lot of times as well.
The traffic, right over the, as he, as close to our house, doesn't have the capability to counterpart?
I think so.
Is there any way that we can request chief to put it out there for Monday through Friday, when we
Yeah, I'll see.
Specifically pick up those morning time and afternoon hours, just to get a.
Where you want that part, you want to start coming.
I like it just, just east.
I would do is like going to Park in Emmons. Cause a lot of cars turn into Emmons to get.
Get back to the school.
Yeah, bunches of them, but yeah, so it's just east of the.
Well, no, they don't either, cause that's bus only.
It's blocked off.
Yeah, it's blocked, you're not supposed to.
Not supposed to, but they do.
I know the teachers.
I think it'd be great if they did open that up for.
Well, that was part of the school dilemma we're trying to get done too.
Um, yeah, I think we have to talk to Robbie Reasonover, cause he's the principal that Doug Hanson is, and he's the one that shut that off.
Well, it's counted, it should, oh, it's counted school.
I understand, but I think the new school superintendent has allowed the principals of each school to run their grounds. So let's, can, can we check with Robbie, and then, uh, new director, and see if they would open that up?
Sure. Which is like. Why aren't we wanting to open that up, I'm sorry, I lost you.
Just to catch them, just.
I thought we were trying to count traffic on Depot Street.
Yeah, can we do that?
We are.
Yeah, but I mean, if they come into the back, backside.
Okay, I got you, you're just trying to see.
Do you get, get as much information as we can?
If we open it up, it might alleviate some of the.
I think it would alleviate going down to the light, or going through the neighborhood on Lawrence or whatever. And to be honest, it wouldn't hurt to put a four-way stop right there.
I've been, I've been wanting to put one there for a while, and nobody agrees with me.
It's going to.
I agree with you.
Take some time to get all of this information together, so, um.
I brought that up two months ago.
And y'all will have a resolution.
Ain't nobody.
To send it back to the planning commission to look at, so, I mean, that's, that's your call, whether you wanna, um, look at doing that, and, I mean, you still have your approval measures that you're gonna have to go through.
So what you're saying is if we.
If you do the resolution on Monday, you're still gonna have time to reconsider it and look at facts.
Because you're making the resolution.
All you're doing Monday is sending it.
It depends on the planning department, and what's the plan?
For the planning commission to approve it, to send it to you.
Why? We've, we've never.
Why, yeah, why are we doing that?
We've never voted to send something to planning commission.
We've never had twenty-one days public hearings before either.
That's what we're trying to.
It's a new change.
So it's kind of.
Why do we wanna speed a specific date?
Yeah.
For who? Okay.
Next level.
Yeah, I get, I get it.
We're trying to help with the paving date. Cause paving has to get done before Coldwood.
Yeah, okay, I got you.
What, you're gonna pave on Depot Street?
On, no, that's an entrance out there. Okay.
Just see if it pays for that?
Here with chief, see if he can count the numbers up here, and then.
I mean, I can give some idea, that was sort of triple or quadruple, we should keep that in mind as well.
But we will put this on the.
Yeah.
On the agenda.
What's up with now?
For this week.
But there's other improvements, they've not been approved, it's just, I think.
Yeah, but they're building houses at the end of piles right now.
Oh, yeah. They're building houses everywhere.
Well, for those who don't know, Marshall County has lifted their. Yeah, they've lifted their mortuary place.
Well, they supposedly had it down to ten, site by site basis, according to.
According to the meeting we were at the other day, Chad went to them and asked and said, when, he wanted to lift the whole mortuary, and they go to do it.
And the.
And they're go, they're going to do it on a case by case basis per subdivision.
The developer pays or puts in the, the, the roadways that we annex all the way up to that corner, like if it was into his subdivision, I would assume, developer pays for all that, puts it in.
I can't explain that with any certainty.
It's a new road, and they're creating it, they're rooting it in.
New road, but from the bridge to, to there, is that what you're talking about?
No, so if we annex, let's say.
That's a situation like on Spring Creek Street, that's an existing road, that the Ellington subdivision is going to tear that up. They're going to, all those junk roads and everything.
For sure.
Um, that's why we have a bond on the road, once they get done, we'll pave it.
But the new road that they're per, or they're wanting to put in.
That's all.
That's all on the boat.
And they don't put a final wear surface until they're, yeah.
Yep, to the finals.
That would be all.
I mean, just that little strip road having to maintain that. I, I don't really put that into the equation, just for the fact that all these homes here, there's a lot of tax dollars there, I don't think that's gonna be an issue. I would just focus on what's gonna be better for the citizens. Cause I don't think that cost to maintain that little bit is gonna be a lot, but I think we should decide is it safer to come out here, or here? Or both, yeah, that's kinda how I look at it anyway.
Yeah, so I was looking at, so you leave a proactive for the fire department back and forth, you're not dumping everybody at the railroad tracks. You still got a line of sight for traffic coming at you, straight on, which is more traffic than it is coming around the curb, so I gotta go along with you on that, and that's what we're talking about in planning too.
As long as we don't, sorry Joe, I haven't cut people off, I'm sorry. As long as we don't have to repair the road from construction, I mean, that should be on the developer.
That'd be in bond, right?
Until it's done.
Well, it needs to be.
Needs to be.
And the biggest question came up that even, suppose he didn't send it all the way through to you guys in the first place, was because of the sinkhole that Hudson brought up. And that sinkhole, from what I've learned from talking to other people, has been there for years, there's even been a pipe in there at one time that they use it to suck water up. So that pipe's been there for years, it's still there, it was supposed to be rocked and shot and everything, put into it, and holding. So from everybody I used to talk to, that's a good fix.
So the engineers cleared that?
Yeah. And those engineers were. That's out of the equation now.
So once you dump it back to the planning, whoever else is on it will hopefully come up with the information that you guys got, and oppose it to them the same way and say, hey. And then eventually, if Young Lane or whatever wants to get in, they have an opportunity to make that cul-de-sac in the city, or stay at Marshall. Cause that's not affected by the roadway, that little subdivision is still on its own, it's still Marshall County. So all we're doing is requesting access to his road, and for whatever reason, they say, well, we gotta annex it, which I don't totally agree with Marshall County, but if that's the way to make it safer.
Yeah.
That's what I'm shooting for.
You know, and back to this, cutting this railroad off. And you got Mr. Hudson's road right there, and you've also got Stephon's.
Stephon's road.
Stephon's road, so if you go any further back, you're gonna cut the people off from, they're gonna go get their driveway. So there's gotta be some final line there where, it's gotta be before their driveway, so they wouldn't be able to get out.
That's right, Stephon's is pretty close to that, eh?
It's right on the very, it's, it's, it's probably closer than being.
Maybe on this side, we're okay, but on that side, you're not.
Yeah.
Stephon's.
Stephon's is.
Is on the.
Tracks. Yeah.
And if you close that off.
It can't get out?
And you don't have emergency access either. Your ambulances have to come from, they gotta go all the way around down Ball Lane, and if they're flying and come through there, you're looking at. Sorry, I'm done.
I, I figured that access route going to his house is, it's been grandfathered in for years and years ago.
Say it one more time, Dale.
You know, when it's that driveway that went to the old houses out there, that was probably grandfathered in with the railroad when they built the railroad in, in nineteen twelve. It went back to that house, and the railroad didn't stop him from using it. If, if the driveway is on their property, they've been using it for ever since railroad began.
There was a cross on the north side too. I think she got over.
That's a long number two.
This will be only agenda, ladies and gentlemen, discussing more if you can, obviously, you can do, in both, however you would like.
You doing A one now?
A one is the.
A one was the report that I just told you to get to eight, yeah, so. All right, let's move on to the McDonald's project, T dot update, we met the other day, uh, McDonald's had someone do their what am I trying to say, a traffic study, and, uh, out here, and it came back that said that there was not enough traffic to warrant a turn lane.
It wasn't a significant impact.
T dot came back in our meeting with McDonald's the other day and said that McDonald's will not go in until they put a turn lane. So we're at an impasse right now, uh, we, McDonald's doesn't want, doesn't feel like they should have to pay for the whole thing, since it's gonna benefit multiple businesses.
If T dot.
T dot doesn't wanna pay for anything, obviously, and, uh.
There are utilities on both sides of the road, so it's more complex than just widening the road.
Yeah, we've got gas.
But T dot originally said they didn't need a turn lane, but now they're requiring one?
T dot has it in their discretion to do, um, what they want, basically, um, they can, they look at the traffic study, but then they also look at uh, demographics and the main thoroughfare is a nightmare, because the schools don't get their people routed through quick enough.
And that's what they're talking about, even though we've asked T dot to help us out with turn lanes for years.
On the schools.
On the schools, now they're gonna.
So are they?
I think, but no, I can't say what I think, but.
Which, we've, I know that Philip has tried to contact the Marshall County School District to try and work out some of those kinks a little bit better. Um, it's just kind of falling on deaf ears, and now.
But I, I'm sorry, I have contacted, uh, uh, some of our legislature representatives, uh.
Hopefully, if you talk to your Reasonover and the other about opening that back, that could alleviate some of the traffic.
That's one of the thoughts that I had to do.
Well, that's the same thing, if they move that one car, they always park at the middle school. Blocking the lane, they only let you take one car through while at the grade school, so that you take two cars through, so they're screwing themselves by the way they allow the traffic to go through.
Where's that at?
At the middle school, I don't.
They're not unloading quick enough, so it is.
Yeah, and they won't let you pick up.
They're backing cars all the way up to the highway, and they're unloading, and if they were going to be in from both sides, they wouldn't have any chance.
So McDonald's wants us to pay for their turn lane, part of it, is that basically what?
No, they're, um, contemplating pulling out.
Pulling out quickly.
And if they do that, and T dot sets a precedent that this turn lane is gonna be required for this business, that's set up for all of them.
Everything, yeah.
And we're not gonna grow, and I, I get it, some people are happy with that, but at the same time, if you're gonna have people moving in right and left. We're gonna need places for them to eat, places for them to shop.
And to be honest, McDonald's is the one thing that people follow. There will be more businesses come in if McDonald's comes in.
So.
They're not gonna come in behind Sonic, they're gonna come in behind McDonald's.
So McDonald's.
So we're turning lane and T dot.
No, McDonald's does not want the turning lane.
It's T dot though.
But T dot is.
It's gonna end up costing over a million dollars to put turn lanes in.
And how much revenue do you think we're?
But T dot, it's not, it's one that's required.
None near a million dollars.
I don't guess that's happening. I'm just wondering how much, I guess, a hundred thousand, two thousand, thirty thousand, eighty thousand?
A hundred.
No, we don't get anything down from the.
Thirty thousand.
And, and we're still in, we've still gotta discuss with T dot some other options, and then like if they live in a different location, you know, that helps.
Not at this time.
But I'm thinking that probably not, yeah.
But we're getting other involvement, uh, like Senator Representative Warner, I've reached out to Senator Hensley, see if we, I don't know. See if we can change some minds maybe. So, that's where we're at with it, just, that was just, uh, to kind of let y'all know what's going on. We are, uh, gonna set up, I actually got a email today from Representative Warner's office wanting to meet with us and, uh, with McDonald's and with T dot to sit down, so hopefully something can be done other than. If that meeting the other day was just slammed down, thank you ma'am, you're gonna do this, I gotta go. And there was, there was no discussion on why, what, nothing. The guy from T dot was in a hurry, got off the call and everybody's just sitting there with their mouth open.
Did he produce, did he ever study or anything?
No, he just literally.
It's out of their discretion.
He just literally said, I think this needs a turn lane, so it does. And that's, everybody just like I said, just kinda sit there with their mouth open.
I saw if he's got it good.
And, but he has that right because that's his job. So, anyway, that's where we are on that, there's nothing we can do right now until.
Keep us updated?
We will, we definitely do that.
But we are trying to keep the lines of communi- communication open.
Next up, Corey on Canyon Springs, Jonathan, I wanted to ask you about this right across from your house, I guess. Uh, there was a report the other day that there was dynamite set off in there. And it has been closed down, but I need to know what the situation is with that quarry, I guess is my question.
I just happened to run home for a minute from work, I was standing in my house, I live on a slab house, I was on the concrete. And I heard something, I wasn't sure what it was, and I felt the concrete vibrating underneath me. It was like, what the heck, somebody's blasted something. My wife comes in, in there and was like, did you just fall? I was like, oh, I don't know where that was. She was like, what was that? I said, that had to be a blast because it shook, it shook the whole house, it shook the, I felt the concrete under my feet.
Well, is this around?
And an hour later, I got a call or text, uh, asking about it, and, yeah, so it definitely.
Was it around nine forty-five?
Yes.
Okay, because also at nine forty-five, there was a blast on the sewer line that's been being done, could it have come from there?
Oh, possibly, cause that's close as well, that's possible.
Because I went down to the quarry and drove in and I saw nothing.
I, that guy is actively at the quarry, but he cuts slabs.
And I don't know why you would blow to cut a slab.
I'd never know of him to blast, I mean, I.
So, you think it's a sewer apartment?
It can.
I think it was the new sewer line that's going in from the drug sewer, past Canyon, over in that area. It was right down in that area, close to Canyon Spring Road.
I can't say where it came from, but. Be the one that makes sense, but I don't know for sure.
It's a state permit, which they got it for the sewer line.
So, what about the quarry?
The quarry, as far as I know, was shut down and does not have permit to blast. So, I just didn't wanna go, go in there, you know, the quarry seemed ahead with.
The quarry doesn't last since he's been operating there.
Okay.
Maybe he did that day, but he never has before.
Okay, and that's what I've been told several times by several people, and I did find out right at that time, there was a blast set off on the new sewer line. So, it very could have been that.
Makes sense.
Okay, I'll go from there. I'll dig a little deeper. Alright, moving on, zoning ordinance amendments, that's second reading, uh, you had this last month, Amy, you can take this one if you want it.
This is the one that, um, the twenty-one day rule pushed this out of meeting, so instead of having it on this next meeting, they're gonna have it in October. While we can have that thing, that public hearing.
There's the twenty-one days coming in the package. Uh, this will also be, it includes the fence amendment as well, so, just so you know what it is. It was in your last package, it will be in your October package, not this coming Monday. Uh, Marshall County sent us at the end of the day, Clint came, Clint Williams came by and asked us if we would recommend, uh, doing construction document updates for building permits, uh, just to make it uniform across the county, at all the cities in the county. Uh, it just says on here, it's for the purpose of ensuring a thorough safety review and consistent service. Please consider adopting following, and it would be approved construction documents that included front rear elevations, footer foundation details, floor layout, roof and wall details, window sizes, plumbing fixtures, gas appliances, energy blocks, comments, and other documents for lumber takeoffs, any other documents deemed necessary by the building official. And a planned review would take place before the permit was issued, he's just trying to make this uniform across the county. Uh, I think it's a good idea.
I mean, I'm confused because you already have to do all that anyway, like you, you have.
It wouldn't change anything for us.
It doesn't, yeah.
We would just basically be endorsing it.
Yeah, correct.
This is what they have, but nobody's endorsed it to not.
We're just gonna agree with them.
Yeah, we're gonna agree just to keep it going the way it is. Uh, urban growth boundary, uh, we have sent in our request, uh, to increase our urban growth boundary. This won't happen probably for about two more years, but we did have to put in a request for it. And they do need a resolution saying that the board expresses the support for the town of Chapel Hill to reopen their urban growth plan. So, that will be on the agenda Monday night as well.
Opening that up will give us the option to look.
It would give us the option to annex should we desire it. But then, once you open, if you open it up, you request, hey, I would like this area to become part of the city limits, I'd like this here. County still has to okay it, everybody has to be hunky dory.
Just open it up.
Okay.
Okay, event committee updates, uh, we had an event committee meeting. Uh, Mr. Piper was, uh, got everybody together, actually had to reduce the turnout. Uh, I did begin to get quotes, we had decided that we're gonna do a tree lighting ceremony this year along with a wreath ceremony for people to come and hang wreaths for anybody that, uh, may have passed away in their families or friends, whatnot. Uh, we're gonna do this down at Veterans Park and it'll be, we decide the weekend of after Thanksgiving when we're doing it.
Yes, the weekend before the break.
Okay, so after Thanksgiving before the parade, uh, we're gonna have a tree lighting ceremony where people can come together and I've been getting quotes on those, uh, one of the guys that I called actually showed up today. He came in and I told him what was gonna be at the Veterans Park and he, basically in the office in here, just kinda teared up because his partner had just passed away and he was veteran. And they had done the ceremony for him, and he said, I've been trying to figure out how I can hon- honor him about what our business was about. And told me if we would allow him to put up, well, something for his partner in that, uh, area during, while the lights were up, that he would knock a big discount off for.
He said yes.
And I said, well, send me what you got, I still gotta get three quotes, that's exactly what I told him. And I said, two more coming, but I don't really see anybody beating this. Uh, he gave us a military discount of ten percent and he gave what we called, he called a blessing discount of twenty percent, so. So, out of the total price, basically that came out to, sorry, no, uh, three thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars, he knocked off, uh, nine hundred and forty dollars of that.
Oh, wow.
So, the total price of twenty-one hundred ninety-four dollars, and I think that's a great deal to light up the whole park.
I see if we sign a five-year contract.
We turn it every year.
Well, he actually told me, uh, that obviously, you know, he would, we would pay probably this up here from here on out, but subsequent years we'll receive a twenty percent discount. So, every subsequent year we stay in it, because what he does is go, whoever he's doing it for, he goes and buys the lights specifically for that. Packs them up and says, okay, here's Chapel Hill, we keep it in the storage.
And he stores it too?
And he stores it. So, next year, when we call and say, we'd like your lights put back up, he's already bought them, so he just comes and puts them up, doesn't have that cost, it cuts to twenty percent. So.
Wow.
I think we have stumbled upon a great idea and a great deal.
Great thought.
And I think we need to get that man up where.
Most definitely.
Well, I'm going.
And that, that's what we were gonna bring up as well.
Most definitely. Do, do we have, uh, outlets for the electrical part of it?
He needs one outlet, that's what he told me, and they, there are outlets there.
There are outlets there.
I know, but we will, we'll have to get an electrician to put one in.
Mm-mm, there's one in the ground up there.
Okay.
Kinda on the, like if you walk in, it's on the right toward the front, skips up out of the ground. And then in the very back, there's boxes back there, it's got four outlets on those back there. Although one of those is stripped right now.
I know that, yeah, sometimes when it rains, they get a little wonky, so we might have to have somebody look at it just to.
So, is any liability involved in that where they run electrical lines on the ground or?
They have liability insurance, they have many health insurance posts.
That would be their responsibility, liability part of that, in case someone gets hurt, maybe you do.
As long as it passes codes, if it passes codes, we wouldn't have a chance.
Yeah, it's all on them, sort of liability, we're putting that up. Uh, but as Amy said, she brought it up today and I think it's a very idea. I think the city, if we, if this goes through, so we're not gonna vote on it right now, uh, until we get the other quotes, but if this goes through, I think it'd be nice compliment to buy it as through a brick.
Yes, I agree.
To put in there as well, for him doing this for us.
Well, maybe, where do we have that information, because I would like to buy some.
I can get that for you.
I, I would like that, and I don't know if that's something that we could reach out and redo again.
Looking at the biggest restrictions, is it Marshall County resident, young one?
No, I don't believe there's any restrictions on it.
I didn't have any restriction, I could, most of them were sort of from, uh.
And we've had a few here and there by them along the way, but.
I, I know my daddy's rock is there, but he enlisted in Maryland.
Yeah, I, I don't think that.
We can look it up, but I don't think there's a.
I, I mean, I was here when it started and I don't remember any restriction as, has to be in the county or city or county.
One of that brick thing might be a great thing for Memorial Day for next year.
Yeah.
And, and bring stuff together, so, I know, I would like to buy one, I think he'll probably buy one for his granddaddy. So, yeah, that's, uh, hey, for those of you that are interested, September tenth, next week at five P M is the, uh, event committee meeting. If you wanna come and, uh, come on the eight, fellowship at five P M, sir.
Here.
Just serve it.
We also need to, with the event committee, be looking toward, going on, looking toward, for the July fireworks, cause the town does not need to spend thirty thousand dollars on fireworks.
They never brought up the last name itself, so.
Um, the next time I'm a citizen of the year, I have gone back and found the names. The original point was not to duplicate, we have had a couple of duplicates, um, but I've sent those to Denise, so she has that. And the only thing I think we need to know is what the deadline is for y'all to decide when we're gonna take applications to.
And the, and the question that's failed every year, is it citizens inside of city limits or outside of city limits, that we've done the vote frequently?
I think that'll be discussed.
I think it just needs to be a citizen who's done something for the town.
I, I think so too, yeah, I'm good with that.
But I think, uh, as far as deadline, like she said, I, I would think we need to cut this off and vote on it in November, so we're not rushing to, you know, try to, I think of last year, year before, we ended up voting on it in December.
Yep.
Had one week to get them there, get them, do their thing and get them in the parade.
I think that if we get applications as senior citizens and they're probably voting for somebody, then we get those out, so people can vote early. Can we put the deadline in November fourteenth?
Well, I would think they need to do it before your meeting in November, cause you're gonna have to vote.
November seventh.
Y'all can discuss that at your meeting next week and just kinda come up with your game plan, the, the board is the one that nominates or decides from the nominations, so.
Alright, closing remarks, anybody?
I gotta ask a question, uh, the sewer treatment, are we still on target to get through by November?
December is our target.
Everything?
I don't, I don't think you were here for a meeting last month.
Yeah.
Uh, we did talk about that, there was, uh, just a slight change or something that they had to do and I'm not technically enough to tell you what it is, but it was only gonna be a week.
It went October and November and that's December.
It's always been, it's always been the end of October, first of November, always, and now it's December at the latest.
I do know that they had problems getting some of their equipment from overseas, so it's coming in, it's still about waiting for new things.
Not that I know of, everything, we do have a meeting next Tuesday, uh, so another construction progress meeting. I will find out and hear everything from there and report back, y'all. Anybody else got any then?
Duck River flags are going up. Flags on the pole, they're going up.
There.
I do, I do need to mention on that, I would like to have everyone input. I spoke with Lady Stephanie Tips last week and we're going to, she had requested a meeting. Well, we had talked, we were going to meet at the police, police department, I had to get a barn moved, it was an all-day event, I missed a meeting, talked with her over telephone. She would like for us to decide which poles we would like for the banners to go on and get her the poll numbers. I agree with Phillip wholeheartedly, if we did five on the north side, five on the south side, if we start in the center.
Come out?
And work out. So, my, my suggestion, or my idea, will be to start at Depot Street, Horton Highway intersection, at the red light right there. Work our way out, if we go every other pole and across the street and stagger. We might have enough to get down to Maple Street, we might have enough to get down towards, uh, almost to, almost to Ace Hardware. So, your thoughts on that, or would you just like for me to just go and do that and get the numbers?
I think flags, do we get?
Ten, nineteen. You can get more later if we want to order more later, we have to pay for it, we can always order more later.
We can get more banners, we cannot get more bracket flags, they're gonna give us ten poles to put them up there.
So, you want, you're gonna have every pole instead of?
Every, every other pole.
Every other pole.
And then stagger across the street.
Okay, I thought the pole was like three hundred foot long or something.
Something like that, yeah.
That where you get the middle of the town, main town.
Yeah, and then give her the numbers of the poles for Duck River, I'm glad Mr. Joe brought that up, cause that was something I'm gonna discuss, so. Get those numbers to her, she'll get to Duck River and we'll get the brackets put up, rock and roll from there. I did look at, uh, Cornersville's and the Wusburgs, they have obviously some Americans, like the American flag back around, welcome to the city of Wusburg. Um, didn't, I didn't find Cornersville, so. Um, didn't, I didn't find Cornsville, so, one of the other ideas that what we had discussed was maybe, once we get these brackets put up, that if we. Could get some Merry Christmas banners, or Happy Fourth of July, or Easter. Now, obviously, we don't want to, just a suggestion, obviously, you don't wanna cover every single holiday, because sure, the goodness we will forgive one.
Well, I don't think that they'll change them that often anyway.
Because it's gotta be all by electric company to do the whole.
Do they have to change the flag?
Yes.
They have to turn poles.
They have to do it.
This is the main reason that we had to stop decorating the town as far as Christmas lights and all that, because Duck River would not do it anymore. It would not allow anyone else to touch the poles.
Plus, you gotta look at the contract that they made up, to make sure not, we're not violating the contract that they have established to get it on the poles.
There's also.
We would have to pay them the same amount.
Yeah, every time.
Every time, probably the same amount of money.
Yeah, they do.
The boy scouts, that in Cornsville also did something, and they went through, like a piece of galvanized pipe, and put an American flag, and stuff that people saw. Going back to the Memorial Day, the Veterans Day, Easter stuff, there are people that would want to participate, I don't know, I probably don't participate. And sponsor a flag, or sponsor something, I think that might be a, a good way that we can help. Generate a little bit of revenue for events, to all the meetings together, but we can discuss that in the next session. Thank you for bringing that up, John.
Anybody else?
Nice to meet you, I'm your office, it's good.
Thank you.
Any openings above the wall?
Uh, we are starting, looking at it right now.
Thanks for your chair, Stu, makes a difference.
Yeah, I like chairs.
I like the chair.
A slate over that is over.
You did find that.
It was, till I got a trip.
One more.
Well, we only got eight, she just pulled that one up. Amy actually wanted a mesh chair, so she got a mesh chair.
They breeze that up.
They do, I mean, I'm in it all day.
Before I retired, I had one of these, when I was retired, I was just home, I mean.
We're done, I guess we can, uh, thank y'all for coming, we appreciate it.
Before I retired, maybe.
Meeting Monday at six. And if any of these little things fell out of your chair, let me know, and I will.
Yeah, I'm gonna like that, I'm gonna give it to you.
Todd, thank you for chiming in with us.
I forgot, you was.
Enjoy the rest of your trip. I like that. Eddie's on the coast of Oregon.
So if, so if I can.
So what's the.
Yes.